If you'd like to join us in the meeting. I plug into the flag in United States of America. The Imperial Public Health, which stands for One Nation Under God, and the two divisions of Liberty and Justice.
Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All we need to say is that. So we're respectful to the pledge.
I'm.
We don't want people thinking that that's making you go to bed.
She's smiling for a whole time.
Um, approval of minutes for August seventh, two thousand thirteen. Ask for a motion to approve the minutes of two thousand thirteen.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of two thousand thirteen. Uh, this specific date was, um.
August seventh.
August seventh.
August seventh?
Your second?
Second. Well, yeah, let's get the date perfect.
I have some corrections to.
What date was that again? Cause I reviewed.
August seventh.
August seventh, two thousand thirteen?
Yes, August seventh, yes.
Any discussion?
Yes. Under the security grant section. It says, um, it was passed from the state for forty-nine thousand dollars, but, um, the discussion at the meeting was for fifty thousand. I just was wondering exactly what that number is. Was that fifty thousand just a ballpark?
Why forty-nine eight?
I took it as forty-nine thousand eight hundred.
Okay, cause the, the, the figure fifty was mentioned in the meeting, so if we could just correct that. And, um, under end of fiscal year report, in the second line, um, solar rays should say solar arrays, yes. Under executive session, in the second line, instead of defermental, it should say detrimental. And I just have a couple of questions on items that were covered at that meeting, and I'm wondering if I could ask a question. Um, on the hiring update, we discussed the fact that the two team chair positions were filled, and the high school sped position was about to be filled. Was that filled?
Not yet.
No, still?
Two interviews next week.
Okay. And then, um, on the competitive grant information, under the finance update, we spoke that, uh, Mrs. Dinas was applying for a competitive grant that had to do with the evaluation instrument. So I'm just wondering where that stands?
We've not heard it.
We haven't heard back yet?
Okay, but she submitted it and it's.
She did.
We're just in a waiting pattern?
We're in a waiting, and I don't know if it's state or federal in fairness. If it's federal, we know we have a longer wait.
Okay. Now, I just know that it was competitive, and we don't get many of those, so, right, okay. That's it.
I would ask for an amendment to the, uh, motion for, um, mending solar rays and the precise number of forty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars.
A motion to make those changes in the minutes accordingly.
And the word detrimental.
And the word defermental.
Your second?
My second.
Can I ask for a vote on the amendment?
Aye, Mary Golden.
Aye. Paul Green.
Michael Reed.
Aye, Jean Stino.
Aye, Amy.
Can I ask for a vote on the original motion for passing the minutes of August seventh, two thousand thirteen? A vote?
Yes, aye, Amy. Yep, yes, aye, Jean Stino.
Aye.
Aye.
Five oh.
Okay.
And one, one thing on the agenda, the, uh, if you go under superintendent's report, bullying policy, J I C F B, the first read, it, uh, would ask for an amendment to the agenda as this is an amendment, not a first read. And ask for a motion to amend the agenda on the bullying policy.
I'll make a motion to amend the agenda on bullying policy, J I C F B. I second it.
Paul and Kevin?
Aye.
Thanks.
Aye.
Aye.
Um, next is the.
And it made sense, guys, because what we're doing is including not just students in it, we're including all staff.
Right. It's a law now.
Yes, exactly.
Took those words.
Exactly, which it makes sense that the law changed to include that.
Um, next up is, is transportation, superintendent's report.
Well, yeah, so we, okay.
Okay, so Mrs. Cataldo and I wanted to update the committee on where we are with transportation. But you, you do not have a handout. I know it says Dean won, but, um, we didn't plan to give you a handout at this time, but, um, a lot of our buses are really at capacity right now. Um, I know we have about forty-eight students that have signed up from more this year from last year, and there's approximately another eighty students that are riding the bus that haven't signed up yet. So, we're in the middle of, you know, distributing the bus passes, and I think once that's distributed, we'll be able to tell exactly where we stand with the bus, um, ridership. We're assuming those eighty, so children will come back to us and sign up, um, for the transportation, but.
Excuse me, there is forty students in increase or?
An increase in forty-eight students from last year that have signed up. But we also are noticing about another eighty students above that that haven't signed up yet. They're still riding the bus.
May I ask a question? At what age are students allowed to take a different bus home than their assigned bus?
Well, it's funny you should bring that up. Because the buses are so full, we are not going to be able to let kids take buses home that are not their own. Unfortunately, we're going to be putting that notice out shortly. We were just waiting for the passes go out. But because the buses are at capacity, if kids, you know, students decide to switch for playdates and other things, what will happen is the buses will go over their limits, and we'll be able to take the kids at all.
It used to be Deer Hill, right? Once you're in Deer Hill, it used to be that you could.
Yes, I know Deer Hill, they allow that to happen.
But not Osgood.
But we just.
Osgood never did not allow it at all.
Those are great.
Starting with Deer Hill, but now we're gonna ask Deer Hill to.
We've crushed many young people's dreams, you know?
I know, and if they were in a capacity, then we would not be doing this, but because of the numbers exceeding limits, we can't.
It would exceed the limits if we allowed it.
And so we're.
So, no, go ahead, well, so we, we just, you know, once we get this all straightened out, we, we may need an extra driver, um, to add to the route and spread the routes out, um, more so that they're not as crowded, the buses. But we'll know that more after the bus passes have been, um, distributed. We do have the bus available if we need it, but, you know, we may come back to the committee and ask for an additional driver to be hired.
Now, that was a reserve bus, right? It was in case of bus breaks, you can get that.
Well, actually, it was the, it was because of the growth in town, because we do have a reserve bus that we, we still have.
Oh, just one of your.
In case of breakdowns, yeah, yeah. But we thought this may happen, so that's why we held on to that extra bus.
So, um, I just wanted to share some feedback that we've just got from parents that asked me to, you know, bring it up. Uh, so I guess, it sounds like, at least on one bus, number five, that there's, um, at least twenty minutes of variation from when it sometimes picks up and, and other days. I know.
That's actually one of our fullest buses.
Okay.
Yes, that could be.
Bus five, I think that's.
Where does it go to?
Um, Pond Street at least.
Yeah, Peachwood, I believe.
Yeah, and it's highly dense residential.
Right.
So, the reckon, I mean, there's a couple of comments the person had, maybe personally, plus, I think it's four, the one that comes by my house, cause it's very precise, but this one, I don't know if it requires maybe a, um, a relook at why it's, you know, even if it's full, it should be, it should be regimented, it shouldn't be variating, uh, I would think, but, so that's some feedback, and then also, um, some, uh, it would be suggested that parents are saying that, um, a ton of people are picking up their kids now, maybe much more than normal.
Yes.
Yeah.
Perhaps due to the, uh, perceived, or, uh, issues with timing.
And I think a lot of that time is, is at the beginning of the year, too. You know, just trying to get, get routes to routes and the stops and so forth.
It could be. Um, could we ask, uh, Mr. LaCount or whoever the right person is to look into this person's idea anyway about restricting parking on the right-hand side?
Can I comment on that already?
Oh, to Osgood, yes.
So, just so you know, what we're doing right now, I spoke to Mr. Kelly about the parking situation. First of all, Mister, I have talked to Mr. LaCount, he said things have eased up greatly over at Osgood, but nonetheless, what we're doing is I asked Mr. Kelly the first week of school, when we started to have backups, to please get signs that would prohibit, and a lot of those cars, it might be faculty even, cause they're there all day long, and I don't think it's parents, the same car is there all day long. But, uh, we asked him to get signs that will prohibit parking along the sides during drop-off and pickup time, so that the buses can go up one route, the cars can flow the other route. And that's already in process, so the signs I understand are being put together, so that that will open up that corridor immediately. So I do want you to know, we have taken action.
That's great.
Mr. LaCount contacted me on the first day of school when there was a backup, and then we've been, um, watching it all month long, but that's a request I made to Mr. Kelly.
So that means, uh, the people parking there, the staff parking in the spaces would have to go somewhere else?
There are other spaces in there, um, that are still open, and if those all fill up, we'll figure it out. But we are trying to open up the, the loop for drop-off and pickup to expedite the bus service.
Okay.
It's always been a tough area.
Small.
To me.
It's very normal.
I guess, um, when you're driving into Osgood in the pickup lane, um, on that, the right side of.
Their parking space.
Seems like, uh, yeah.
It's about ten spaces along the curve.
And when the parents come in, they're actually coming in on the center of that entryway, and so the buses can't get by them.
Another related comment, which maybe is, is flowing into a different topic, but, uh, indicating that perhaps the school activity schedules weren't adjusted to accommodate the extra ten-minute school day?
After, yes, well, what we're understanding, and I, I haven't spoken to anybody that does programming outside of school, but for students who might take an art lesson, a ballet lesson, a karate lesson, those lessons didn't start later. So because we're ending ten minutes later, the distance from when the kids get home to have to get in mom's car to go to someplace might be shortened, so that it's easier to pick their child up at the end of the day, causing more cars to come in.
They're not talking about school sanctioned act, well, school activities, yeah.
Well, they could be. They could be, but I think the bigger issue is students who have lessons of other sort outside of school.
Private lessons, yes. At least the school activities, maybe, can we coordinate to, to push those out accordingly?
We can check into that part. We'll, we'll certainly check into that.
These are operational things, I know, but it's just people are concerned about it.
Yeah, no, it's.
Um, I've been looking into it a little bit, and, you know, I think mostly, eh, within the ton of Cohasset, uh, they're pretty coordinated. It's just that a number of our people are involved in activities, South Shore Conservatory of Music, and, you know, um, ballet classes.
Yeah, this person specifically thinks school activities weren't adjusted to accommodate the ten minutes. So, that would be something we could control, and it makes sense to.
Yeah, we'll check into that, but, thank you.
But they say at the elementary ages more than the high school.
This is an Osgood parent, yeah.
Yes, cause I've been looking at the high school, you know, to, to see. But, um, I know the high school has, um, after school, they have the different extracurriculars, like, you know, uh, uh, running club and different, different things.
And athletics and so forth.
Yes, and that.
Yeah, middle course is six or eight.
We had, we just athletics at the high school.
Yeah, six or eight was adjusted, you know, for that period. And there is a direct correlation with the fullness of the buses and the bus, the length of time that the kids are on the bus. That twenty-minute swing could be because, and bus five is the route that we're on. So, there are tons and tons of kids, so if they have to stop, you know, at every stop, which they do.
Wouldn't it be the same every time, though, once you?
No, it's not, because people pick up their children after school, kids do all kinds of activities. There's, and I don't think it's because of the length of the bus ride that they're doing it. I think it's because they need to get from point A to point B.
So you're saying the loading and unloading, depending on how many people show up at the stop, can make a difference.
Exactly, exactly.
Worth, worth the time.
You know, sometimes the bu, I see the bus driver go right by a stop, because there's nobody standing outside.
Right.
They slow down, come to a stop, and if there's nobody there, they take off right away.
Right, but people were there at another minute or two.
Exactly. It doesn't seem like much, but when you have so many stops on the bus.
Twenty minutes isn't so much.
Twenty minutes isn't so much. I remember sometimes Lily used to get off the bus at four o'clock.
Yeah, was it worse in the morning, or?
In the afternoon, it seemed to be worse, but I.
I think you're correct, because the activities occur, whereas the board is one objective and that's good.
Exactly.
Well, see, part of the problem is that they're not getting so Osgood on time either, because of the.
They're already late.
Because they're late from the other school being dropped off, so that doesn't help either. And that's a lot to do with the crowded issue.
Yeah, so we gotta, I know you guys are on it to solve it, but it needs to be solved.
Right, and we are working on it, and I think once the bus passes are distributed this week, we'll have a better sense of who is on and who is not on, and that will help with our numbers.
Thanks, thanks.
And what's the special education coordinated program review?
So this evening, I asked, um, Laurie Valani, Director of Student Services, to come and present the coordinated program review. Uh, we spent about sixteen months getting ready for the review. Uh, Laurie arrived last summer and had to redo a good number of portions for the state when they contacted us, and she has. And so she's gonna present her findings as to what the state had to say, and in addition to what she has to say, I'm just gonna hand out, um, she put together this focus area for corrective action, which I think makes it much more succinct as to what we were asked to look at, and then she will discuss from this what she's already tackled in the process.
Good evening. Um, two weeks ago, when I was here, meeting with you all, we were anticipating the arrival of the coordinated program review at any moment. We received it that Friday, um, and what I hope to do tonight is to kind of take you through the process of how we've gotten to this point, and talk about the work we have ahead of us. So the timeline of events, um, in the spring of twenty twelve, the previous student services director, um, started the process with an internal review, self-analysis, and preparation of documents that were submitted to the Department of Education prior to my arrival, um, in July of twenty twelve. Um, that fall, I met with the Department of Ed for the first time, um, and at that point, we actually were given the opportunity to resubmit a bunch of our documents. Some of the dates, timelines, compliance, those types of things were, were off. Um, and being a new director, they gave me the opportunity to kind of submit some newer information as I came in. Um, in January, they did the onsite visit, as we've shared with you before. This, um, happened over the week of January twenty-second. It was interviews with administration, teachers, parents, um, as well as a significant amount of record review during that time. Um, September seventeenth, we received the final report, as Superintendent Cataldo has said, um, that was a little bit longer than we had anticipated. We had first expected it at the beginning of the summer, we were informed we would have it in August, and then it came to us in September. Um, and on the twenty-sixth, I had the opportunity to meet with our liaison from the department and really go over the report, um, and talk about what the expectation is moving forward from the district. So your summary of findings, um, Cohasset fell into two categories, that was either implemented or partially implemented. So implemented is the requirement is substantially met in all important aspects, and partially implemented means the requirement in one or several important aspects is not entirely met. These are the state definitions. So our overall findings, there were fifty-nine legal standards for which we were assessed. Fifty of the fifty-nine were fully implemented, and nine would require corrective action from us. In total, there were two hundred and fifty-seven different items they looked at. So within those fifty-nine legal criterion, there could be numerous, up to fourteen different aspects that they were looking at under that subcategory. So, out of the two hundred and fifty-seven, there were fifteen specific items that are going to require corrective action on our part. We were eighty-five percent compliant within the legal criterion, and ninety-four percent compliant within the overall total of what it was that they were seeking from us. The purple below that is where we actually stand today. So over the course of this time, I've had a lot of communication with the Department of Education. We knew what was going to be coming our way for most of the findings, and corrective action has already taken place. So we have already, um, implemented things to correct those pieces, and the rest of it we'll focus on for the rest of the school year. So areas of acknowledgement, um, some of the bigger items for which we were found to be fully compliant is that of FAPE, which is the Free Appropriate Public Education, the basis of all that special ed is. Um, our professional development, our use of paraprofessionals, as we call them here in Cohasset ESPs. Our outreach by the school district, determination of specific learning disabilities, selection of assessments, our timelines, and determination for eligibility, all of the major pieces of the special education process we were found to be compliant with. Our areas of focus. Now, this is the sheet that I actually, um, handed out to you. So these are the major title areas of the legal criterion. As you'll see on the paperwork, what you're looking at, sometimes the title seems a lot bigger than the actual corrective action we need to do. So, um, determination of transition services, IEP team composition and attendance, progress reports of content, IEP development and content. Each of these is a much broader co, uh, topic, and within that, we had minor pieces of that for which we're going to be requested to do corrective action. So moving forward, um, our corrective action plan will actually be due to the state on the eighteenth. I'm in the process of writing it now, and what it requires is a step-by-step action that we will be taking. And within the step-by-step action, we also have given them specific dates by which that action will be completed. Some of the aspects that are already in progress is meeting with the stakeholders, team chairs, psychologists, special education teachers, principals, um, those types of groups have all begun the conversation of looking at what it is we need to do. Staff training, some have taken place, some are scheduled to take place. Um, we had implemented ESPE, there's some bumps in the road, but it's up and running, um, which will help us with compliance and paperwork, as well as the addition of team chairs for the oversight of the compliance. Um, and it will be a continued district-wide conversation over the course of the year. The goals of our corrective action plan are for long-range systemic change, ongoing internal monitoring procedures, a real look at the root-cause analysis of how we got to where we are and why we're non-compliant in some of the areas, and oversight with new tracking systems. Our next steps. The corrective action plan will be individualized to Cohasset. It'll outline all of the steps for the nine criterion of which we were rated partially implemented. I will submit it to Department of Ed on October eighteenth. They will review it. They will come back to me if there are pieces they want me to add or change, or, um, you know, go deeper with the trainings on. Then we will have two reporting periods. So January seventeenth, I will upload all of the documents from our first, um, corrective action plan meetings, and then March twenty-first, I will do the second up, upload of information for the corrective action. Our goal is to have this completed within one calendar year. When I met with our liaison chief, we both felt that we really would be able to submit everything by June thirteenth and be a good standing. So, we are off and running.
One quick question.
Yes.
Most of these, I mean, all of them passed, and the ones that were not, they were partially implemented, there was nothing that failed?
Nothing failed.
Okay. What can we do from a committee to help this go forward? Are there any particular tools or things you need?
Um, I think we're in good standing right now. The addition of the team chairs is gonna help us tremendously, tremendously. It was actually one of our findings. Um, and with the, that addition, it's allowed us to be able to respond to parents much quicker this year. I've already had numerous parents thank me for the responsiveness of how quickly we're able to get back to them, schedule meetings and whatnot this year, um, just with the additional hands-on ability, so.
And was there anything in particular you saw caused a lot of these things to be the same, partially implemented problem?
I think a lot of it has to do, um, with training.
Okay.
And I think, um, some of it is philosophies of different directors. Um, I've heard, had a lot of feedback from staff of, we've, we're given a different directive previously. Um, a lot of it has to do with just process and paperwork, um, which is different. And I was fortunate coming into Cohasset that I had just completed a coordinated program review in my previous district. So I already had a heads-up of exactly what they were looking for. So when I came in and saw some of the process and procedures happening here, I was able to quickly shift, so that we didn't have as many findings as we potentially could have.
Um, how often is this done?
Every six years.
Six years.
And then there'll be a mid-cycle review three years from now.
Okay, and then, like, it's kind of a two-part question. So does the state come back?
Yes.
Or do they take our word for it that we've taken the corrective actions that we saved?
Oh, I have to submit to them, um, a ton of paperwork.
Oh, I'm sure you do, but, but then do they come back and look again, or do we wait six years and then they?
They'll be back in three years for the mid-cycle.
Okay. So they kind of take our word for it, that we've done what they've suggested, or what we're supposed to do?
I will actually have to submit to them IEPs and evaluations and paperwork and all of that process. So it's in writing that we've done the corrective action.
Uh, so, uh, thanks for the presentation. It's really, I had no idea it was so thorough and, uh, process driven, which is.
Very much.
Glad you're, you're doing it. And so, just two quick questions. Uh, one is, how did we do three or six years ago compared to today? And a specific thing about, um, IEPs, I'm curious if a parent doesn't consent, uh, at least initially, what happens next?
Sure, so, um, six years ago, under the new deal's previous leadership, it was a perfect coordinated program review.
Okay.
So, we've had some change. We've had some change. Um, as far as if a parent doesn't consent for an IEP, we do have paperwork in process now. I think I made a little bit of waves when I first started sending it out, because if we don't receive a IEP at thirty days, we send a letter to, a formatted letter to parents, letting them know that, um, we've reached our deadline, and at that point, it is considered rejected, and it gets sent to the state. So at thirty days, if we don't have a signature from parents, it is automatically under mass regs, considered rejected, and it will go off to the state. Parents then will receive a letter from the state, I think is daunting sometimes. They don't have to do anything with it. There have been many situations where parents have said, oh, I'm so sorry, it was, I had a pile on the kitchen counter, that type of thing. So they do have a right to sign it at that point, and it's still in place. We do follow phone calls. If parents reject an IEP, we will have meetings with them to go over the pieces that are rejected. So there are steps that are taken to come to resolution.
Thank you.
And sometimes they go to people like in our office. I mean, they have an independent person, um, test person if it's rejected.
So a second opinion on the, on the evaluation.
Well, yeah, exactly. And that happens a lot. There's many psychologists in the area who end up getting involved.
I, I just wanna make a comment about the program review, too, because it, it is a huge undertaking when a district has to do this. It monopolizes hundreds and hundreds of hours. Um, in fairness, we did have a perfect, uh, report six years ago, and, and in fairness, the staff, I think they've done a fabulous job. When I came, we didn't have a handbook that really lays out all of what they need to do for the legal directors, timelines, it says when reports need to go out, how long you have to complete things, and the process and procedures. And, uh, there was one six years ago for Linda, but it's outdated, laws changed, things have been updated. And so, Ms. Valani took that undertaking, you saw the manual, I believe, last meeting, we went through it. And so that's out. And the other thing I wanna point out about the coordinated program review is, there are times, cause I've been in a district where I entered and it was, nothing happened. In a lot of cases, if you look at these, it's not always, uh, complete, not consistently done. So it is done, but it's not done by every single, uh, person for every single parent, and that's what we have to really clean up and make sure that we're executing properly. So we feel that the handbook will help that process, knowing everybody has it, and they won't have to try to find the answer, the answer will be in the book.
Um, Laurie, just to make a comment, so this, um, the high school sped position, I would imagine is a big component of what needs to happen.
It's a piece of it.
Yeah.
The team chairs are a huge piece of it, to be honest with you, cause a lot of the paperwork, you know, making sure that we're uniform, K to twelve, and how we're handling things is happening, is really gonna be a big use of it.
Great. Um, just a question, so six years ago, we got a perfect report. So, uh, uh, every, everything happened, progress reports were complete, the parents, you know, all, all the paperwork. What happened in the last six years? I know that the regs changed, but.
The regs changed.
The fact that parents weren't as much a part of things, a lot of these comments are not things that, you know, have to do with regs changing. Some of them are, but some of them aren't.
I can't say specifically why it went off-track. You know, we changed leadership a couple of times, and sometimes things get lost in fairness to everybody, and everybody's holding their own. I think they've done very well, but I think that a real big key in any district is having that manual. And because enough new faculty had come in, in fairness, they weren't in possession of a manual, and I think that will really help folks moving forward. And then each year, Ms. Valani will update that manual as it needs to be, and she'll make sure any new faculty who come in will be given a copy of that. And I think that is going to really help the process. But if you don't have a manual, and you come from a district where you might not have received that training, you might have to guess. And it, in fairness to our faculty, that, we owe it to them, to give them the timelines, the rules that they need to, to live. And in fairness to our faculty, that we owe it to them to give them the timelines, the rules that they need to live by, to make sure they're doing things so they can do their job accurately.
And the support to get their jobs, too.
And, and question, has there been a huge increase in IEPs? Is that part of it too in the last six years?
Uh-uh, yeah.
Okay. So it wasn't an increase in IEPs, it was a transitional time, we had different leadership, that type of thing. And some things got, you know, fell through the cracks possibly.
Basically, I think that was it.
And how about technology? Have we had problems with technology? Has that been an issue with some of these things? You know, because I think.
We have updated our system.
Yeah, because from what I gather, now I'm much more heavily involved in special ed just because I'm seeing half your s- people in your country, staff, whatever.
Right, and, and I was going to.
But anyway, it just seems like, you know, that there would be a program that you, the director, would be aware of when things come up to do, you know.
Yes.
You know, just like.
Yes, the new ESPED program allows me a significant higher level of oversight.
Exactly.
That our previous program did not allow.
Yes, so we're on top of that.
Yes, and that's going to make a huge difference because the program that we had, the ESPED talks with our database, whereas the last program we had, did not talk with the database. Everything had to be done manually and it's just the way it is.
Sometimes, sometimes it worked manually because obviously we were perfect, so, but whatever. So we'll see. Some of these things should be cleared up by that.
Yeah, a question. Where do we stand in respect to other districts that are similar in size? Do they have any, any backup or all sorts of compare?
I honestly haven't done a comparison of.
Completely compared.
I haven't. I can tell you my last district had thirty-eight legal criterion that we were correct of action, but it's significantly bigger district.
Right, and, and prior to that, six years, it was almost every indicator was wrong.
Prior.
Not here, not here, in our last district. Let's clarify, let's clarify. No, yeah. So, I mean, it, it's hard to really compare a district to a district because there's so many factors that go into why a coordinated program review comes out the way it does.
Just, does the NIES visit incorporate special ed review or no?
Not this coordinated program review. They look at all aspects, but not this.
Okay.
Yeah, remember when we, we got some results, there were some cohort groups that we weren't super strong in. We didn't need improvements and things. Often, some of those cohorts are things that we need to work on, that dovetail into what we do. I mean, that's kind of how I saw it in terms of regular review. It highlighted some of the things that we need to work on for all students.
Thank you.
When will the CPR be available to the public?
I've been checking the mass site and it's not up there yet. So that is typically where it publishes first. So I don't know what that means.
Once they publish, we'll publish.
Okay, and when will this be on your site?
Once they publish, I'll put it on ours. To be honest, I haven't checked the last two weeks.
Are you talking about this meeting?
Yeah.
Well, even this, there was a lot of information. I'm not.
Do you want my copy?
Yes.
Can you give it back to me? You do so much work and you have my copy.
Thank you.
I'll just write my name so I get it back. You don't even have to. Cross out my name. Just a special question.
Thank you.
Nobody has to return.
No, we have to collect them until they're published. We can't, we can't put them out to the public until they're published on the website.
Okay, so they're just looking at giving it back today?
Yes.
Okay, so give it back tonight.
We have to take them back tonight before they're published. I won't distribute it.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, so we'll get him and then bring him back.
Repast. We'll extend the meeting so you read.
I don't want the teachers like a student review and test while they're still teaching.
It's only erase the notes while you're still writing.
All right, so the next. All right, so the next thing on the list tonight is to talk about the student enrollment. And so I put a PowerPoint together just to talk about what we've been doing with the student enrollment, watching our numbers and what some of the plans are looking down the road this year that we will continue to inform you about. So in terms of the future of the Cohasset public schools, we are looking forward to, you know, a very healthy future, obviously. But we want to look at the enrollment and as you can see, between two thousand eleven, twelve year and the two thousand thirteen, fourteen year, we've had a growth spark, a very large growth spark. And we know absolutely that this fall, we had a surprise with our kindergarten class, that we need to be looking down the road as to how we're going to handle that. In addition, we have the private school enrollment for the last four years, but we've not finished collecting the enrollment for this current year. We're still waiting for a good number of schools to turn in their data so we can give you some final numbers in fairness. So these are last year's numbers. But the fact is, we can see that there was a dramatic drop between eleven, twelve and twelve, thirteen. We don't know if that same drop will occur. I just also want to go back and point out, when you look at the student enrollment here, if you take the line and, and take a look and add up your half day and your full day and you start coming across and moving down, you'll see that our classes are growing continuously. The only place that we had a dip was this past year from the eighth grade to the ninth grade. We did go from a hundred fourteen to ninety-five, but oddly enough, we went from a hundred in the junior class to a hundred and one in the senior class. We grew, which is unusual in your senior year to add on. But for all of our classes except that one class, we have been growing consistently. And I think that's something we should take note of. So in terms, looking at the concerns for the future, the things that I've been looking at are the census, which we know was not very forthcoming this year to help us with information. We had about sixty-eight parents return the census indicating we had kindergarten students entering. We have a hundred and thirty today. It's a little bit more than we expected. And then we have the Toll Brothers building project. And I wanted to talk about that because that one's the one on my radar right now. If you go down three A, you cannot use your phone or your two-way radios because they're blasting. They have a permit to blast the rock at the moment. But what is, I've met with Toll Brothers this August and asked them what is happening. And so they are obviously building and they have a timeline of approximately thirty-six months. I've also talked with the building department about tear downs and additions. Continuing to look at the increasing enrollment and we'll be looking at what Nestdeck has for us. We're looking at the actual building space that we have available in our buildings. We know that this year, that the Sellschur Education Collaborative, this is their last year in our buildings because we're really running out of space here in the middle high school. So for the time being, they're going to find a new location in another town. We aren't sure which town right now, but we're working with the other districts to see who can help them. The Sellschur Education Collaborative, we no longer have space for them. So we gave them notice in June two thousand thirteen that as of June two thousand fourteen, we'll no longer be able to house them. So we gave parents a lot of notice because we felt it wasn't fair to give them, you know, a couple of weeks' notice to say there's no space any longer. So we want to give everybody a chance to really look around at the other districts who are part of the collaborative and if somebody has space for them, they'll be able to welcome them into their school. How much classroom or how many classrooms? We have two. And what we had to do, because we were so short on space this year in the middle school, we took space right upstairs and we had to put a wall up in between and break it into two spaces, which they found quite suitable for the year. And it's actually great for me because there's a nice exchange going on, being so close to them. But the reality is, we're going to need that space as well. We obviously know that we have concern about the buses, this little overcrowding going on this year. And we know the first day that there were some Oscar children who were looking for seats unexpectedly. And then we have concerns about materials and technology because whenever you have an increase in your population, you have to add on materials and some of those materials are quite costly. So in terms of the census this year, as I said, we have sixty-eight students that were reported to live in the district that would be entering kindergarten this year. We clearly had approximately a hundred and thirty show up at the opening of school. And the lack of the census returns is what's causing the count to be off. But in preparation for this year, I already contacted Erin Dale over at The Mariner and asked her if we could talk about how to put out a series of articles in the paper this fall, in particular, leading up to the deadline for the census to help parents understand the importance that their census plays on our budget and making sure that we can as accurately as possible predict the number of teachers we need, the number of seats we need, the numbers of materials that we need, and buses. So hopefully, we'll be working on that this year, this fall. The Toll Brothers project, so they are building forty-one housing units. And when I spoke to them, their prediction was, of course, that they thought the project would be done somewhere around two thousand sixteen. They figured thirty-six months approximately. The houses are being built to order. They're not specs. They're not doing any spec housing. They're going to wait until there's a purchase. In fact, they contacted me and asked if parents who are considering could enroll their children in the district before they purchase. And that obviously is not allowed by policy, nor would it be good practice to have kids moving in and out. But if they have a purchase and sale in accordance with the policy, from the school committee policy, they are allowed to enroll their children. So we have that. And the houses range between twenty-six, six hundred and thirty-seven hundred square feet and they are either, there's eight designs, seven of them have four bedrooms, one of them has three bedrooms. So we have the potential, as I sat and talked with Toll Brothers, we have the potential for about a hundred and twenty-three new students from K to twelve that we're looking at. And even though a number of those students might go on to private schools, the reality is, even if twenty percent of them went on to private school, you're still looking at in the nineties to have students coming into the district. That's a whole bus and more. That's at least four teachers and possibly five. And depending on where they enroll into the district, whether it's middle school or elementary, we determine where we might need more teachers in content area subjects. But that's something I talked with them about and I will be in touch with them on a regular basis as to where the houses are in terms of sales so we can get an idea for enrollment purposes. As we're now seeing how many parents and families are moving into the Cook Estates, we're trying to keep track of these things.
What's the, the homes with Cook, Cook Estate, how many units and how many?
I have to get that number for you. In fairness, I cannot remember the count.
Are any of them, you know, ready?
Yes.
It's not many.
I have to get that count. I know that, I think there's somewhere, I believe around ten.
Yeah, I think there's.
Ten houses?
No, ten students.
Oh, ten new students.
I think there's thirteen that have gone. I think there's two left to go.
Yeah.
But I'll get it for a count.
A few, not many, but most of them are.
So thirteen houses, we got ten students.
I think it's ten, but I'll get the exact number for you for the next meeting.
And they're comparable three to four bedroomed, I think.
I'm not sure they're three. I think there's only two or three bedrooms in some of them I love.
They're bigger by volume, but it's got a full basement, so.
Okay.
Number of bedrooms, probably most of them, I think they're three bedrooms or two.
Yeah.
They set them up from a sewage point of view, so most of them are two bedrooms and some are three. With, Toll Brothers are bigger.
Yeah.
Can we get some data from Toll Brothers to see in other developments that they've done that are similar, how many students end up living in them, you know? Because I wouldn't bet, bet there's going to be more than twenty-five kids coming from this project, you know, not a hundred and twenty-three. But, even though that's three, every family has three kids that come to school.
Well, even if they're not three, when they open their doors, they could potentially grow to three. And you're right, and I can ask them, but every development is different. When I ask them about other developments, some of their developments were very, very large. But I can ask them comparatively, how many people moved in with students, gladly.
Be interesting to see.
Yeah, I, I totally disagree mathematically with the number a hundred point three. The average size family in Cohasset is still two point two or two point three. I mean, there are people who have four and people have one, but that number is.
Well, you're right, the potential is.
The potential, you fill every bedroom. That's what I'm basing on.
Yes, but I think a more accurate number is looking at thirteen houses from the Cook Estate. You have ten. It's three bedrooms, they're big houses, three, four bedrooms, it's really not going to make that big of a difference. And so, you know, we're going to have thirty-six, you said how many new houses, forty-one, so that's three times as much. So there's thirty new students. I don't see a hundred and twenty-three. I really don't see anywhere near as much.
All right, well, I'm, I'm taking it that if they're all four-bedroom and you fill the three bedrooms of students, children, each having one, that's your potential.
No, it's just not how it goes. I mean, I see families, I've been seeing families on the Sellschur now for thirty years and there is no freaking way that that's the average population. The average population is two point two, two to three students, really.
Two point, two point two children.
Kids, yes, that's way.
That'd be about eighty-five, eighty-six.
Yeah, but then you're giving twenty percent.
Half of them will be empty nesters and so on.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, you know, we enlarged our house, we did an addition after the kids left.
But your point is correct. If you go by the assumption that's two point two, then you're about eighty-five.
Uh, yeah, but not all those houses are going to have kids. They're going to have, there's a number of people who I have made referrals to and things like that, who bought really nice houses. First off, they're expensive. And a hundred times you're not having people with elementary school aid being able to necessarily afford houses like this. And they're not exactly starter homes. And then the other thing is, it's just not everybody. People are moving into this town and their kids maybe have a couple of years left in high school. And they like Cohasset. They're looking, Cohasset is also a place for people to retire to. We have to remember, there's still like thirty percent of Cohasset is going to be seniors, sixty-five and up.
If you have point seven five kids per housing unit at Cook, right? Then you've got point, if you do that, no, that's thirty, so.
Exactly.
But nevertheless, let's, let's overplan for, so we don't have a shortage.
That's why I'm looking at the maximum potential. I'm not saying that this is what we'll wind up with. I'm saying the potential is there. No one said we won't have that, but if you amortize the number of bedrooms, the possibility exists.
If you got me to birth control.
This presentation is not about birth control.
Let's not go there.
It's not going to be a hundred and twenty-three. No, I was paying for that, so.
I know, wow.
Keep beating out horse, you guys.
Let me, let me go on. Just knowing that there is potential, I want to keep that in, you know, as the superintendent and knowing we had a large number because census was not returned, I want to make sure that I am being proactive in the district to make sure we have the funding in the event we have the surge.
Correct.
Otherwise, if we get there and we aren't prepared, we won't be able to do what we need to do to keep the quality of what we've had.
Totally. And what was really helpful, Superintendent Cattaldo, is you're looking at the private school and I also did the math of how many people were leaving from eighth to ninth grade. And we had a big departure.
Yeah.
This past year, we lost nineteen students. And last year, we only lost, the year, you know, eleven, twelve to twelve, thirteen, we only lost three. So if you look at the class coming out, even in that big class, which was a pretty big class previous in eighth grade, we're still losing quite a bit, you know.
And the majority of those students who left went to, I believe it was either Notre Dame or B.C. High, because we took a look.
Correct.
And most of those answers were, the responses when asked why their students were leaving was for family tradition.
Right, yeah, just totally, it's, you get it. Not all classes are come through.
Right.
It would be interesting to see what this census has in terms of, you know, like a ten-year prediction.
Yes.
Not just this, because we don't want to end up with hiring a lot more and not maintaining it. You know, we could switch around second to third, we could switch around ninth to twelve, but we want to make sure the census goes out at least ten years.
Well, and we can only make a census as good as parents return it.
Uh, understandable.
That's where we're at. So the other thing to note is that in the number of tear downs to indicate that the town is growing, last year, twenty-one permits were issued. I talked with the building department.
Right.
This year, thus far, sixteen permits have been issued. So, you know, you're looking at a combination of thirty-seven houses. And that's a combination of tear downs and add-ons, although she said the most of these were tear downs, but the additions continue to grow. And she talked about, when I spoke to the building department, there was a discussion about the fact that the old housing stock is being replaced slowly. And of course, that would be something for the town manager to look at and the planning board to look at, how they want to handle that moving down the line.
Just a comment about that on my, my screen, it seems like half the screen is tear downs. But they're being replaced by people, a number of people who have kids who are either in college or in high school. You know, a lot of people, you know, it's like they want to get the kids out, then they fix the house. So that's happened a lot in Cohasset. As some of us know. So we have to be careful even looking at that.
Right, but I still want to.
As deep on as any indication, the tear downs and not even the people moving in aren't necessarily ones with little kids.
That's probably true. We'll have to track who moves into those homes.
Right.
No doubt about it, but again, I've been given, you know, the authority to make sure I watch over the district and I'm trying my very best to make sure we don't run into any glitches down the road. So the, the bottom line is housing stock is rolling over in the town now. And it's a small town, so thirty-eight new homes essentially for tear downs. That's a lot. The other thing is just to keep our eye on, in the increasing enrollment, a hundred and eight students since two thousand eleven and you see the enrollment grew. and, uh, you see the enrollment grew in all the grades, but grade nine. In terms of building space, the building's on at capacity, but middle, high school is very tight on space, so that's why we've had to ask the SLSH Collaborative to, um, not be a part of our district for the next few years. It doesn't mean they won't come back, but usually, once you move to another district and you sell, unless that district can no longer house you, you tend to stay where you go. So I'm assuming over the next five years or so, we probably would not have, because of our numbers, if they stay steady, we would not be able to survive, come back. In terms of the buses, a new bus was purchased this year, adding to the fleet of nine. We have over nine hundred riders on the buses currently, both pay, paying and free riders. And the Toll Bro- Brothers Project could give us the potential, potential, or at least another bus, if we have enough students in that area.
Any bus.
With a caboose, possibly. And then the additional items that we need to think about, if we should continue to grow in enrollment, additional students will mean additional materials, whether it be technology or textbooks or whatever, it still means more materials. At least one, maybe two buses needed in the beachwood neighborhood, we seem to have an awful lot of students on that side of town currently. And the numbers of Avalon are also monitoring those. So just to keep the count. And then, in terms of plans for looking for the next five years, I didn't think ten, I really was looking at five, is to create a plan with town manager, make sure that we have a more accurate census to help us plan for the future, beginning with kindergarten. Work with the planning board so that if there is a housing project that develops, or if there's a lot of permits that are hold, that we're at least aware that it's happening. Doesn't mean it will result in children, but if it should, we are now aware that that is happening.
Yeah, excuse me, what that census will help us is the birth rates.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we can get that out and, you know, have five years prep.
Yes, exactly, and that's the key right there, is the preparation and future warning or whatever to know that we have to be prepared. The other thing is, I'll work with Public Works, because, uh, again, we have to think about getting the buses around and groundskeeping and so forth. And then the last thing, and I'm not saying we should do it today, but if enrollment continues to grow, we might need to be thinking about a possible space study in the school, because if we move up any further, we'll, we'll outgrow our quarters here. And we are not prepared to do that, obviously, it's a long project if you ever have to add on. And that's not where we're looking to do, we're not planning to add on, we're not saying we should add on, but at the very least, we wanna be proactive in looking at our numbers in case that is what the district needs to do down the line. So those are the things that I wanted to bring to your attention tonight in terms of enrollment, because I know we haven't really sat back and looked at it, other than when NESTEC has sent us our update. And last year, their update was based on sixty-eight students from the parents who sent their census in. So this year, we want to try to get as tight or as clean a census as we can, and I'm working with Mr. Milanowski, how we can ensure, aside from putting articles in the paper, how we can ensure that the census will be filled out by everybody who needs to fill one out, it really should be everybody.
So last, last year, the census showed that you, you were gonna have sixteen additional students?
Yeah.
And we had.
Hundred thirty.
Yeah, hundred and thirty, so obviously that wasn't that accurate.
And most of our count came from going out to the preschools in the area and looking at the children who lived in Cohasset.
I mean, you know, some of that was San Castles didn't have it, but some of it was the parents didn't fill out the census.
Correct.
I think that is probably one of the, it's a simple thing to fill out. When I moved here, the first thing I ever went down to Town Hall and said, this is where I'm living, this is the.
But we can find out the births in the town, that much.
But, but a lot of the ones that, kids moving in are, they're two or three or four years old, they're moving in as a young family. So if you're coming from Boston with a young kid who is a year old or two years old, it's not gonna show us the birth rate, you don't pick up when you're here.
Oh, yeah, you get to pick up, then you gotta find out five years out.
Yeah, but like the Toll Brothers and the Cook Estate, it's the move-ins that are, and you see that sudden blip. Um, you were mentioning about how many per year drop out, uh, eighth to ninth, three years ago, I looked.
Move out, not drop out.
No, we're, we're.
You drop out of the census.
Went to, went to private school.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, three years ago, I went back, we had a list for sixteen years.
Yes, we did.
And I looked back through and from, I, I did eight to nine, because that was the big drop that you saw. It was sixteen on average over those.
Sixty percent.
Sixteen students, over the sixteen years average, there were ups and downs, but.
Which is around sixty percent.
Here, it's nine, sixteen, five, and nineteen. You know, there's ups anywhere in small districts, so you may, you know, have variations there, but it's probably gonna be similar. I mean, the percentage of the private schools, likewise, it's around fourteen to fifteen percent.
Right.
I think the Boston Globe probably used the numbers from two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, they had seventeen percent in the private schools, which is probably the number that we saw.
For us or for generally?
Uh, it was one of those published, uh, a couple weeks ago, for Cohasset.
For us, yes, for us.
Yes, right, I got it.
Was two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, is the sixteen percent, which I figured out on.
Yeah, it's been about sixty percent often on all these.
So I think it's, it's better honestly to have overcapacity potentially than have to build something new.
Totally, we just wanna make sure.
In a, in a district where.
Right.
Yeah, I went to a high school, we had portable classrooms, which are fine, you can do it when you have a, a large bubble of students coming through, but I think it's best to, you know, look at potentially if there's gonna be even eighty kids, let's say it's just a, you know, two children per household or less, but eighty is, you know, is a reasonable estimate to knock off sixteen percent.
It's, it's just, uh, my belief, to tell you the truth, and working with Eddie and other people in terms of the town studies and stuff over the last five years, some of this increase, I think, is going to be, uh, is due to a, a number of factors. I think, uh, a lot of our, uh, town area, especially where some of this, uh, high, high building going on, has just been sowed. And, you know, so there's gonna be growth right there. I mean, some of this is gonna be leveled off, Cohasset doesn't have a lot of buildable land, and we're gonna max out. So we have to be very careful, we have to look at growth, we have to be a little more realistic about how many babies we're gonna have. And we have to not overreact either, because there's been a lot of problems in other towns that Eddie and I researched, where people had these growth rates, then they're stuck with, you know, um, a problem, like too, too much space and then having, how to, you know, to do it. I mean, he was in that situation for a while, they had, you know, school that became something else in many towns, population shifts. We just have to look at a lot of factors. And we may, you know, sometimes you have to, to consult with an expert who, who really knows about, uh, this type of thing. There are people who study this and really can look at the variables. I am not an expert in, uh, community planning. I remember once applying for a job when I first came here, and how I got in the final interview at, I think it was in Harvard, Mass, for the, uh, town planner, I mean, it was Michael's job, and it was ridiculous, uh, as a psychologist. But there are people who study, uh, and that's really what they do, to help towns to plan for their school sizes.
But we certainly, we can give a fairly reasonable estimate of what might be out there. If we just have just a census that's filled out properly, that would give us
Right.
an awful lot more information than the potential planning.
Absolutely. Right.
Because we'll know at least the hard core numbers, what is there and what is coming into the district.
Well, it would be nice if they had more of a.
We can, we can potentially, we can potentially plan for, you know, a, a little more space that's here and there, where you may have one extra classroom split or another classroom from the, that's available.
Right.
That may be open and then closed as needed according to census, but I think that the clearest thing is that if we had a census that people filled out, would make an awful lot easier.
Well, right, and I think.
Sometimes they're giving positive reinforcement for filling out the census, you can't reward them with money, but you certainly can have.
Well, how about, you know, no dump sticker if you don't fill out?
Yeah, yeah.
You have positive reinforcement, I don't know, that's something we could coordinate with the town manager. But, um, yeah, it, it's been a problem in all studies and census, you know, my brother-in-law works for the census, he goes house to house, uh, doing some, uh.
Well, we gotta bring him here, because clearly there are quite a few people that didn't fill out the census.
Well, Vermont is really hard, because you have to walk and walk to finding a house.
You wanna walk far here.
They will come back to door-to-door census, yeah.
But I mean, one option is, you know, the, the dump sticker or facilities fee or. Something that is, is really useful for a town member to have, that they ought to fill out to get it, that's probably.
Or have a very poor rate of return, you said, a hundred.
Well, we, we got a, I don't know the percentage of return, I would have to ask the town, but enough to know that we were very short of our number for kindergarten. So the big one is to really ensure that next year's kindergarten class is a more accurate prediction, so that we have the right number of classrooms. And it might be that we discover in the census, we only need five kindergarten classrooms in the field currently, they will be shifting around in terms of, because we know next year's first grade classroom's gonna be pretty large. So those are the things that we have to think about, but at least if we have as close and accurate a census as possible, then hopefully it won't negatively impact the budget.
Right.
That's really the goal.
Do you have a couple questions up there?
Yeah, anyone else hear that? No, yeah, go ahead.
Oh, I just have a question about the, um, I know you need the census for overall school planning, but it's just, if the census is the only thing, uh, or is the census the only thing that's relied on for that, that being the parent of a kindergarten? And I'm just thinking, like, last year, I know the parish house, I'm pretty sure had about thirty-three pre-Ks. I'm gonna give the community center twenty, the integrated program twenty-four pre-K? So that's seventy-seven. And then you've got in Leal Colony, the Conservatory, Ground Bear, Daycare, Sand Castles, and the Prebits potentially having additional students. So I'm just wondering, is that surveyed as well?
Yes.
No, this, this, yeah, but it, but it should be the.
And how does, I'm trying to think, can you triangulate to get the number?
Right, but, but the, no, this is the town census, that you get mail and you fill out and say how many people live in the house.
Yes, I understand.
Another doubt point.
No, I'm just saying, can you use that as one data point, and just not rely on.
We do, that's why we knew the census was shot.
One of the things where it came up was that, um, it was, uh, San Castles eliminated their kindergarten, and not all of them went to Cohasset, but that was a, a large bubble that came into the district that we didn't normally have. I mean, it was there for many years, and that was one big blip of input of students and.
Right, but they were gonna come eventually.
No, but kindergarten was the problem, kindergarten, there were just too many kids to show that they're not being on the census, and nobody knew they were there.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, I just wanted you to get more related, reliable data, just gave a survey of parents at those programs.
Right.
Well, we have.
See what you get back, I don't know.
I can also address that, we have a liaison in the kindergarten, among the kindergarten teachers who checks in with all of the preschools, that's how we knew the count was so far off.
Okay.
But the fact is that we really, it's a, when you're planning your budget, you start in November.
Yep.
It's really important if parents are willing to submit their census, it helps us to keep an accurate count, because as the years go on, we know that the budget will get tighter and tighter and tighter. We're trying to make sure that we continue with the quality of education that's been given thus far.
Yeah, I, I like your trying to get an incentive and coordinating with, um, Town Hall, because I think also parents who don't have children in the district yet don't understand how it impacts them.
I think that was some of it, that, um, people either moved in or didn't realize that was, you know, part of, part of the thing that.
Oh, yeah, two years ago, I know lots of folks went in and registered their kids at the last kindergarten.
Right, I mean, if you move in in August, that's.
Never occurred to them like, oh, this could be a problem.
Yes.
The other piece is that way.
It's for the education, so.
Yeah. That way, in terms of kindergarten, we're trying to do as much in the spring now versus in the fall. And if parents have, you know, turned in the census, we can contact them appropriately and help to process along.
Yeah, the testing was great in the spring, by the way, of course.
Good.
Yeah, well, I mean, quote, when you're off by fifty percent, you know, you got a problem.
Right. Can you add, and maybe, we talked about this, like, an RSVP card in a sense to all of the preschools in the area, where they could say, hey, in November, I'm probably gonna send my child to public school for kindergarten, half day, full day.
We can live back short.
So then you could get a really good indication, and we have this connection anyway with the schools, go to the director and ask all their parents to fill it out. So along, just kind of along the same lines of what you're saying.
And then we can hope that they do.
Yeah, but again, you know, if, if you're a parent and you see, am I gonna send my kids to Cohasset Public School for kindergarten? I'm probably gonna think seriously about filling that out.
Yeah.
It's like reserve your slot now, not that you wouldn't have it if you throw in the trash, but.
Right, no, I think that's a very valid idea. But we just, you know, in terms of what tonight was.
It's a good idea.
It is a great idea, in terms of what tonight was, is really just to talk about where the numbers have been going and the potential for where they could go, if all those rooms are filled, but if they're not, it won't go that far. So, but I wanted you, as a committee, to know that we're looking at all aspects, and as a district, we're trying to coordinate our efforts with the town to make sure that we are looking at everything and not just, you know, one particular aspect and finding ourselves short. You wanna make sure.
Right, no, there's growth, we're gonna have to figure out how much.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, the, the other thing was, a few years back, the planning board wasn't in direct contact with the schools, and now it's a little bit clearer.
I just picked up the phone and called, so helpful, started checking regularly.
Because you find out how many, how many building permits are there, what are gonna be building, new buildings, teardowns, expansions that are not necessarily a new family, but you'll get an idea of what potential growth is there.
Yes, and at the same time, I've been checking in with other towns as to how they manage to get their census returns. Some towns had as high as eighty-five percent on the first round.
Yeah, we have to figure it out.
And so I've talked with how they've been doing it, and then Mr. Milanowski and I have been talking about how we can improve the census return in town here.
Right.
To help us.
That would be great, because ours is really low.
Hopefully not, between, uh, Erindale and everybody else, we will get it back where it needs to be.
They get a free coupon to get some.
Do we have one in town?
No.
No, no. Anyway, um, any other questions before we go on?
Um, two things, first of all, I do think you're closer on the Toll Brothers thing. Only because Cook is condos and they don't allow swing sets or anything like that.
Really? I didn't realize that.
Oh, I didn't know that, wow.
Yes, and Toll is not, big difference. Um, but other than that, my main concern is CPAC issues. And, um, oh, uh, our out-of-district kids are at, some of the collaborative kids are, are out-of-district kids. And, um, you had said you were, um, letting the other schools have an opportunity to say we have room, what if they don't have room?
We've already had one school believe they do.
You have, okay.
Um, we've already been talking with other superintendents, and we have one superintendent that's already stepped forward and said that they believe there's space in their district.
Okay, 'cause I, I know a lot of those kids, they need a lot of warning.
Well, that's why I said June of two thousand thirteen, or June of two thousand fourteen, then they can be in their summer program wherever we allow, you know, they have, they are able to move to, they would have the summer to acclimate in a school without all the other students, and then come fall.
Yeah.
So it was a long process, I worked with Hank Perrin on that, to make sure that there was a timeline that would fit for all the families. Because I do understand the anxiety that brings in terms of making those changes, and I felt that a year's notice was a, a good timeline for parents.
And when do you think you'll know where they could go?
I don't know.
Because if they can't go to that school, are there other options on the horizon?
Well, I'll be checking in, once a month, I'll be meeting with all the superintendents, so I'll have a better sense. We put the first pass out, uh, two weeks ago, I think it was two weeks ago, and one thought that they were pretty sure they would have the space, and another one thought they might very well also have the space. So when I meet again in two weeks, I'll have, in six weeks, I'll have a better sense.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, there was talk last year of a learning-based program that you were gonna bring into, so I guess that's.
Well, I think there's been a lot of conversation about that, and the fact is that currently, we don't have enough students to open that program right now, for various reasons. So until we have a full worth of students, we couldn't open one as a new school.
Yeah.
But if you brought in some kids that are out of district, that would fill those classrooms.
We cannot, we can only ask parents if they'd like to have their students return, we cannot make parents have their students return.
I'm not ones that, I'm not, I'm saying out-of-district students.
Right, that's what I'm referencing, we, we can ask parents and invite them, but if you don't have enough students to initiate a program, you can't build a program, then ask parents to, if they like to bring their children back, and if the parents say no, then you're sitting with an empty classroom and a teacher being hated.
And what if you allow other students to tuition into it?
Uh, that's a discussion we would have to have with the school committee, because that would be a budget issue.
Well, you have mentioned that before as an option.
Mm-hmm, but your programs.
Right, but right now, we don't have enough students for the middle school, start a program.
Right, well, it's my understanding there's also not a program with Osford School for substantially separate classroom.
Mm-hmm.
So I was also told there's not enough students there to develop a program. Right now.
So how are we meeting these students' needs with the combination of this report and the fact that we don't have things in our district and, um, you know.
You're a very small district compared to most districts.
I understand that, but we live here, our children live here, and we're, we're talking about the children.
But as we've explained to you in other meetings, you need to have enough students, you can't have a classroom of one because that will not develop social skills.
I understand, but there's still children in the district that are under the law.
I would be. What I would recommend is that you schedule a separate meeting outside of this, because this was just to talk about where we're going in terms of enrollment, but if you wanna talk about particular programs, I would be glad to meet with you outside of meetings.
There was a lengthy discussion with Ms. Bellani last year. It, it may be five of our meetings about the language-based program, and now it seems to be going, you know, that was a big part of our talk with you and Laurie, so.
Right, but we haven't had enough of a call.
I'll probably suggest you set up another meeting, whether, then see if there is potential availability, need, and size that would warrant it.
Right, I mean, I feel like most of the meeting was spent on talking about how many kids are we going to get and who thought what, and when we talked about the IEPs-
Well, I mean, that, that, some of that is, if, if there's not a large enough cohort, you can't have a, a program, because you're gonna have to have the state guidelines and recommendations and evaluations that are there, if it's there, but not certified for a volunteer, it's a difficult situation.
So I would be glad to meet if you're outside of this meeting, but this probably isn't the place for that conversation at this time, because it's not on the agenda for tonight. Okay. Thank you. Thanks. Any other questions?
No.
No?
Next up is the bullying policy, we've, uh, earlier amended that, it is an amendment to the original bullying policy, and it's not a first read.
Right, so I just, this is a policy that the legislature changed the dialogue during the summer, it was voted in on July first, and what I put in red were the added words of the legislature, I took it word for word, right off of the law, and just to add it in, uh, the other piece that I added that was not in your original plan was the definition of a perpetrator. So we have added that in as well, at the re, you know, as the law specifies, and so before, and again, under the responses to bullying and retaliation, uh, there's some blue explaining what would happen, the staff found to engage in bullying or retaliation may also be subject to disciplinary action. It's very straightforward, and once it's voted on, which is what we need, is a vote by the committee approving the changes that are governed by the new laws, we will then submit it to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education as required by the law, and we will post it onto the website.
Yeah, I mean, is all of that a question?
Just wondering if, if a copy of the incident report form should be attached to this, or just generally speaking, are those held separately?
We have those that get submitted, but what I, that didn't change, what I wanted was the language that did get changed, that needs to be voted on, because, and we just took it word for word, out of the law, we didn't do anything else. So once that's done, we would then flip it all into black and post.
Yeah.
But they, the principals still have all the forms that they must allow.
Okay.
Absolutely. And, and in addition, they need to change all the handbooks now, if this is-
This is a lot.
Go ahead.
I make a motion.
May, may, uh, motion approve the, uh, bullying prevention and prevention plan?
Yes, I make a motion.
Second, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Uh, passes five zero. And next was the emergency plan, this is a first read.
Yes. And this was a, um, this past week, the Subcommittee for Policy sat and took a look at policies, and Mrs. DeMoss brought this forward, that this is something that had had changes but not been voted on, so we wanted to bring it forward to you for a first read. Obviously, what is in red is what is, is being changed.
Okay, Paul mentioned what's being, uh, changed in the emergency plan. An emergency plan is to be posted in each classroom office and common areas where students may be present. All employees will be made aware of the various procedures, and these procedures must be viewed at the beginning of each school year. Each employee will sign a statement indicating the procedures in red and are understood before the first day of class.
So this year, if it's voted on after your first and second read, the teachers will be signing a little late, but next year they'll sign the opening.
As for a motion approved, emergency plan, word change?
I make a motion to approve the words. Any trouble times, this is very important.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero, aye. Next one is first aid, first read.
This was something that we had reviewed also, and it just, it didn't make it to the table. Um, there was just something that we felt, there was just this one word that we felt was very important to change, so.
So under six and first aid, all access to students and staff members will report immediately to the principal, who will advise the superintendent, the superintendent will advise the school committee if necessary. And as for a, a motion approved, the first read on the first aid.
I'll make a motion, and this is, you know, we had some problems that happened in the, in the science department, and, you know, it just made us, we checked this, and I think it's only important.
This one in the emergency plan.
Exactly.
Now, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes five zero. Uh, next one, clubs and activities.
So in your book, I know there was a lot of discussion this year as to the clubs and activities, there's been a number of fairs that were run during lunch breaks, during Spirit Week last week, Mrs. Conley organized, um, a certain number of activities to be shown during the, the lunch fair where students could go and sign up and learn about it, and then again, I believe, last night, there was something that was happening, rec?
Yes.
And I was not able to attend due to illness and my family, but maybe Ms. Childs can tell us.
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. Last night, uh, the Cohasset CPAC hosted an activities fair, uh, and those activities included community groups, uh, sports in our district, and the clubs in our district. Specifically, this was geared more to the middle high school, uh, we found a real gap in, uh, the information that flowed, uh, from the school to the students and the parents for the students on IEPs and are under the student services. Um, we held this, we hosted this fair to help parents and students come meet these clubs and hear from, uh, Mr. Bron, Mr. Ford, um, in order, in a less chaotic environment, so they could kind of get a sense of, uh, get a sense of what was going on in each club. We had very good attendance, we had a lot of participation from the community, um, and we had a lot of, we had good participation in from the school clubs as well, with student representatives, um, and as Diane informed me last night, of the people that she had talked to, the clubs and the community representatives who came, every single one of them said, I wanna come back and do this next year. And we found it was very good momentum, uh, and it was a wonderful way, and there were things that we learned about the community that we didn't even know. So it's a wonderful way also for the, uh, Deer Hill parents coming up to get a better sense of what's coming their way. Uh, as I said, Mr. Ford spoke, uh, the Cohasset rec was there, the Rotary, um, the-
Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts.
Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, uh, the Appalachian, Appalachian State, uh, Appalachian Service Project was there.
Boys and Girl State, uh, and-
Care, uh, and Special Olympics, uh, attended.
Cool.
As well as many, uh, school clubs, as in Coastal Research, Art Magazine, and-
Student Council, this gentleman was there.
Yep, he was there last night, and now he's getting up to the union, yeah. So, uh, all in all, we found it to be very successful, uh, good momentum moving forward, and we are just pleased as much that, uh, we could bring this to our community.
But there was only fifty people attending, it was a great, that's a lot.
And so we were very pleased.
In percentage.
No, thank you for doing that, it, it's been a while since there's been a, a real, uh, art fair, and this sort of thing that puts out what's available to the students that are there.
Well, we want to thank Mr. Autumn Bailey, because we said, throughout everything, this was, he was the lead of this.
Thank you, my pleasure.
His first meeting on the school committee, this was a request of his, and it has, we have never forgotten this, and that is why we did it, because he had requested it, and we had had parents that also requested it, and that's why we-
Thank you guys for executing.
And we wanted you to see the booklet that has evolved this year that, um, Mrs. Conley put together, along with, I believe, um, Ms. Sandler and, and Mr. Scott, and so that you would at least know what we have offered in the schools. So that was the purpose of that, and I did want you to know that we did follow through with the fair.
It was, it was to piggyback off, right off, we wanted to piggyback right off that momentum and that synergy, uh, Mrs. Conley putting the handbook together, the open houses, then the Spirit Week, right in, so all the students and all populations, like, should-
And, yeah, I know, I think it's a great idea, it's, actually, we've had this in the past, um, but what happens is it gets kind of put aside, and we've had fairs in the past, but, you know, I saw every year, it really needs to be updated.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it hasn't happened in a very long time.
Correct, yeah, when my kids went to school, it happened every year. So i- it kind of depends, it was on the first base, so you speak, whether it gets implemented.
Well, it was nice, because it involved whole community, not just-
Exactly.
Right, it was a community.
No, I don't think we ever included things like ASP before, which is great.
We in- included everything, CSCR, CMI.
Yes, yeah, Rowing.
Yeah.
That's true.
Rowing, yep.
There's a lot of things going on outside the community, so it's great.
And then, in addition to it, uh, CPAC has also offered a grant, um, for, um, 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 trying to think of the name that we put for it, but it's, um, it's a social thinking grant, it's for leaders to understand what social thinking is all about, and, um, we have hired Katie Shamet to come, she will train the peer leader students, she will train any of the town, um, any of the district, um, club students, uh, so that they can, um, more easily get kids that may be a little timid to try a new thing, or maybe a little reluctant to come to the groups, to get all the kids engaged in programs in the school.
That's great.
Um, it is also available to any town people we announced last night, um, any, any sports coaches, it is available to anybody, if we end up with a huge number of people, we will find grant money to feed our grant. And because it's really important that, that, that people are comfortable dealing with all kinds of people.
Right.
And I was, yeah, I would include RISE, you know, the RISE program, the rec department and things like that, because, uh, you know, sometimes they were there, yes. No, in terms of, like, being trained.
Oh, we, we've already operated it.
Yeah, that's great, and the summer camps and things.
Yeah. So we did want you to be aware that, you know, last year, Mrs. Conley was getting to know the district, and what she did in the spring, she started to make the changes, and now you're seeing those changes coming through. So, uh, the last thing on my report is the, uh, my goals, I made a change for you. That's all right, it was an error, but I made the change, and then now it's up to the committee, it's your pleasure to go to them and know.
Where was the change?
Oh, I'm-
Goal three.
Yes.
What did you change in goal three?
I changed it, um, from adolescence to all-
Right, yes, yes, yes.
As for a motion approved, the superintendent's goals amended and, I guess corrected, uh, for two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen.
Um, I'm, I'm motioned.
You're, you're the motion person, there you go. Is there a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, uh, opposed?
Basically, zero seconds.
Five oh. Um, next up is the Warren, fourteen dash zero six, Sierra.
Make a motion to approve Warren fourteen zero six S.
Do you have it?
Do you have it?
Is it under, is it right there? You can pause.
Well, that's, uh-
Um, while he's doing that, maybe I can just indicate to you from the communications section that I've just, I placed an article on your desk there from the U.S. News and World Report, that these are fifty top high schools in Massachusetts, Cohasset is number twenty-two. If you remove the five charter schools that are in front of us, we are number seventeen in public schools.
And the one area that we need to, I mean, statistics, garbage in, garbage out, so, you know, you have to look at the variables, you know, obviously class size, and we, you know, we do offer some AP classes, but it's always been, from my feeling, that we could, um, decide, I know we do the virtual testing, the primary school thing, but we could up it, that's where we don't compete with our, like, schools, you know, they're in the sixty point four or whatever.
Right, we are actually looking at that this year with Mrs. Conley, Mrs. DeMoss and I.
Right.
So we are aware, and so I wanted you, I wanted to give the article to you, just to have it came out, I believe, yesterday.
But in every other parameter.
No, we're looking at the whole structure, that'll be another presentation for another meeting.
Yeah, I think last year, we were, I wanna see your PCE and MNT, and twenty, so it's comparable to, to last year, and a little bit better. If you look at some of the, the schools there, they're always in the same grouping as, as Cohasset, Dover, uh, Surver. The, of the one that's there, you know, the Bromfield School is the one up in Harvard, Mass, and that is comparable demographic, it's comparable size, um, they, they have a good branding, they use their name, the Bromfield School, as opposed to the public school. So I think, now, some of that's PR, but they're a, a really fine public school up in Harvard, Mass. That's a, a comparable one, too, a cohort for, for Cohasset, some of the others may be a little larger.
They just have a lot more kids taking it than people are being taught.
They, they probably do, yeah.
There are so many, only so many block schedule hours in a day, as we know. It, it's just that, it's not only that, it's just that, uh, we, we're small, we have to figure that out.
Yeah, it's a small district, right.
So is theirs, though.
Yeah, there is a small.
Yeah, yeah, that's why I remember that, that's a, that's a fairly comparable social environment and size.
Yeah, I mean, are, there's just some areas that we just don't stay up with the type of school we have, like, we talked about it, I mean, there's very few students who take the AP physics exam, very few students who take the C.
There's one in my phone.
What? I know, but for many years, we didn't have any.
I wonder what kind of schedule they have there, though. I mean, maybe it affords them the opportunity to have more.
We can look, we can look at it.
I just think that would be an interesting factor.
I, I, I doubt it, because it's hard to get, um, into AP classes unless you kind of have block scheduling, because you don't, you, especially with the new requirements that have been added, because when, we used to have, that you, you didn't have investigative science, two years of general science, you started with biology, chemistry, whatever, so we added some of the general science type of thing to our curriculum. So unless you kind of double up like that in math and s- in science in particular, um, it's hard to, and that's where a lot of the APs are, you know, in math and science, uh, quite a few.
So, I guess, so the, I think, the point of what we're talking about is, uh, how many people take APs versus, in other schools versus in ours, and of course, pass, so, and how do you encourage to, more participation or more, uh, ability to pass the test, so?
We're looking at that right now, and we'll be doing the AP awards at the next meeting, and so you'll be able to see the counts of what we have for eleventh and twelfth graders, and, uh-
Okay, and understand the incentives or the, the reasons why people are participating more or less in the school.
Well, we can talk with Mrs. Conley at that next meeting.
That'd be great.
Right.
I mean, the other thing, I guess, when they apply for the AP and they take it, how well they do it, and that's also fairly important, and if you, and a lot of students taking it, but not doing well, then are they just taking it to try to say they're taking maybe three or four or five?
Right, we did fairly well in history for many years, we did fairly well in some areas in science, not all, um, you know, for, uh, and in English, we did okay, in languages, we did poor.
Does this mean that fifty-
Latin, we did horrendous, Spanish, we did not do well, in some of the, in languages, we just really had, struggled in the language. For a long time, we didn't have consistency with language teachers here, so maybe now they, in fixed, they're not as good.
Does this mean that we have fifty-eight percent that were tested, and only forty-five percent of those who were tested passed? Or forty-five percent on the total, meaning like eighty-five percent passed?
Um, I believe it's forty-five percent passed.
So, of the people that took the test, only, we have, basically, half took, and only half of those who took, passed?
So, what I would recommend is that I ask Mrs. Conley and Mrs. Deamis, or at least Mrs. Conley, to come and talk to the committee about it, and what we're looking at. Because we've sat down and talked about all of the curriculum this year, but I don't want to bring that on the table tonight, it wasn't on the agenda, and I don't want to prolong the conversation without the folks who are now a heavy part of it. So, I'd be glad to put that on a future agenda for you.
Thanks.
I mean, you can also look, you know, some of the, you know, Boston Latin, forty-one percent passed, so, eighty-one percent passed.
That's an exam.
Uh, tested then passed.
Right, eighty-one percent passed versus forty-five percent passed for a.
Right, but guys, can I, can I say something?
But these are also, you know, sometimes are small.
We can't lose the big picture here. I mean, there are a lot of students who aren't going to take any AP classes, and to me, success is measured in a lot of ways. You know, it's measured in the student how, what their skill set when they came, their baseline, and what their skill set, um, you know, was when we left. Yes, I mean, Cohasset is, has a reputation now for educating all students, so we have to keep that in balance.
Right, true, but success is also measured in how many pass the test.
Yes, 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 but we, you know, there, people move to Cohasset for a lot of different reasons, not just, you know, necessarily.
So, we'll save that for another meeting to help.
Yeah, we have to be here.
Yep.
So, over to the, uh, warrant, uh, as for
More, the warrants.
So, there's an motion on the table to approve warrant fourteen
Fourteen oh six Sierra.
Yeah, did you review?
Oh, six S.
Yes, I did.
Is there a?
Is there a?
Second?
Second?
Call in favor?
Aye, Gary McGolda.
Aye, Paul Nivini.
Aye, Paul too.
Aye, Gina Stino.
Thanks.
Yes. Next, uh, next item on the agenda is a monthly financial update. Your packets include a report of expenses through September thirtieth. At, at present time, we've expanded about seven point eight percent of the budget. We're, you know, we're starting to look at, um, different areas, forecasting and so forth. One area that we may have an issue with is, is our unemployment expense. I don't know if you recall, we, we cut it back to, to meet the bottom line, but, um, we have one, one person that has a potential of collecting about twenty thousand if, if that person doesn't get a job soon, so. So, we, we're keeping an eye on, on, on all those amounts and so forth.
Well, we also have someone who came back on after quite a while, so.
Yeah, but that was, that had some credits there, too.
The way that they that, yeah, you found the credits, so that's, that's good.
Yeah, so that was good.
Uh, I have a question.
Yeah.
That I want to ask Paul if I can, Dr. Schubert?
Sure.
I asked a question.
Yeah.
Um, in the government shutdown, is that affecting us in any way? Do we have government money, federal money?
It may affect us in part of our grants, our federal grants coming in, they may come in slower, but, um, it hasn't affected the amount we're going to get in.
Yes, yes, oh. Okay. Oh, I know.
They just may not come in.
Like cash flow.
Cash flow, right, yeah, yeah. I mean, we haven't heard exactly how that's.
How, how much are we dependent upon that? I didn't add that.
Well, we, we request funds every month for, for our grants, so.
Correct.
They may be a little bit slower coming in.
Okay. So, we may have to. Do you only anticipate a cash flow problem?
Maybe, we may, yeah.
Okay, so you have to kind of look over that, just a little bit.
Small amount, so, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Going, going back to the unemployment, that was shifted to the schools a few years back.
Yeah.
We're one of the few districts that has that as a line item responsibility, aside from those that are regional school districts. And almost every district in Massachusetts has that as a town expense, and this is, uh, again, a small district, and a, and a small change in the unemployment cost affects our district far more than even a regional district that we own.
That's why we, we have to watch it closely.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then, um, on the last page, we did receive notification that we were approved for the kindergarten grant.
Go ahead.
Um, it doesn't reflect on this report, but you'll see it in the next report.
And that's like a state level, not federal?
That's a state grant, yeah.
So, no, no federal money involved in that?
No, no. But we were approved for forty-eight thousand three hundred eighty-two dollars, so that's, that's a good thing. That took a little while to, to get in, you know, we waited for that approval, but we just got it in this way. And I think, um, that's about it for today. If, anybody else has any questions?
No, that's great, we're seven percent to whatever, I mean, it's
Yeah, we're on track.
Yeah, we're on track, because it's, it's very lucky how many months we're in school.
Yeah, we're stuck, yeah.
Any, um, communication, any communication?
Dave and I went to the, um, Alternative Energy Committee meeting on Monday night, and, um, we reported at the last meeting that the process has stalled for the solar arrays because of the, um, the SREP credits. But the newest news is that Tanya Odell has resigned from the Alternative Energy Committee to take a position on the advisory. So, um, there are two new co-chairs, Sean Sella and
Marie McDonald.
Marie McDonald.
Yep.
So, we'll be continuing to watch that, and hopefully, the, the credit program will take on more, a little bit more.
And as a committee, they still want to look at other, other avenues of, of where we could have efficiency, so.
And you got to remember, excuse me, if she's on the advisory, she's still going to be involved.
Absolutely.
She's not going away.
She said she is. No, she's not.
Right, and she's already been told she can be, you know, she can, she can come and be a liaison, so.
And she's very talented, and every time I've seen her speak, and give a presentation, it's fantastic.
We, we need her expertise, you know.
Yeah, and watching on the library as well, she'd be, you know, very helpful there as well.
Um, went to the playground opening on Tuesday, which was just outstanding. It was so great. Um, so, you remember the presentation a few weeks ago, but it was really wonderful, and it's just a great space, and, um...
It's amazing how quickly, yeah.
That's great.
Um, so, that was pretty fun.
Uh, so, and I had gone to the open house at Osgood, which was outstanding as well, in the last few days. A, a couple of just operational things, just because I haven't seen you, I wanted to ask. People were complaining about the projectors in the classrooms not being hooked up. Is there, they were, they're there, but apparently not connected yet?
That's right, it's in the order. They were expected to be
It's on, it's in the process.
Still in process, yeah.
Okay.
Mistake account moved it up till Christmas.
Oh, okay, good. You know, when you're there, people just kind of grab you and say, and then, and then, um...
Well, would you just have been made aware?
Oh, good, everyone, that's good, that's nice. And, um, one, just wondering what the right forum is, so, some people were, uh, wanting to understand better Envision math as a curriculum matter. I don't know if we talked about it here, or just to give you the feedback, and we talked about it with your principals, but, um, people are complaining that they don't understand Envision math, because of course, it's a different method of teaching than we probably were taught ourselves, you know, and, um...
I, parents you're referring to.
Parents, not the children.
Okay.
They're not, they're not complaining about the curriculum, just yet.
That's hard, of course.
But, uh, so, you know, they're saying like, oh, I don't know how to teach my child this, because it's, you're adding differently than I learned how to add or subtract, or whatever the issue is. So, um, I'm not sure if we could have training for parents, or what we think.
Let me, uh, I'll do a question. Let me speak with Mrs. Deamis tomorrow when I see her, and, and bring this issue up to her, and see if we can put our heads together.
That's great, thanks.
Okay?
Excuse me, we kind of did that for the Chicago stuff, so, when it came through.
Information sessions for parents?
Yeah.
That's a great idea.
Yeah.
But the major concept between, with Envision is mastery, before, the old program spiraled through concepts, and then revisited them every so often. So, you never, the, the kids, I think, never got a real feeling of, of mastering a certain, certain parts of the curriculum. And it was hard to teach it, too. It wasn't so easy to, to leave kids dangling when they were feeling a little bit insecure about their ability to do lattice math, for example. Wait, take it to that one. You had the hundreds first. But anyway, um, to go, to touch on your conversation about the projectors, um, I was at the high school presentation, obviously, because I have a high school at home. And, um, there were wires everywhere, so that's a problem. There, you know, none of those are even in the ceiling. They're just everywhere, there were wires.
Probably on the dockers as well.
Um...
It's all in process.
There was something else I was going to mention about the high school, but I can't remember what it was. Sure I wrote that down?
Any questions?
No.
Oh, I know what I was going to say. It wasn't about the high school, sorry. Tomorrow is the first, um, Osgood School Council meeting, and I am going to go to that. So, and I will make an effort to be at all of them. They're only once a month. It shouldn't be a proper to go.
Are we on that together?
The high school one's coming with.
Are we on that together?
No. I think you're Deer Hill now.
I think so, too. Good to know.
Got to help load it.
Better find that out.
About a minute. So, if you're, so, calendar, we sent you the list.
No, we do have a list.
Oh, good, let me check that, bye.
And I think the only guy I haven't recorded is, uh, you know, Garrett Bradley, tomorrow, to try to see what is available from the state level. From state to schools and locally, uh, for local aid. Um, the next is executive session. There is need to go into executive session. I'll use number two. As for a motion to conduct, uh, to go into executive session for the sole purpose of the executive session and adjourn now, go into executive session and not come out for the remainder, uh, closing meeting here, enter executive session. For number two, to conduct strategy sessions in the preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiation with non-union personnel. As for a motion?
I make a motion for that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, voiceover, Paul Schubert, aye.
Paul Nivini.
Can you go in another room?
Five, zero. Adjourn the regular session.
I make a motion to resume the, right, sorry, the session.
You have a second?
Are we going to come back?
We will not come out of.
To adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Five oh. Thank you.